I'd like to open this meeting of the Curriculum Evaluation Committee on Monday, February 15, 2021, at 6:00 PM. We are meeting via Zoom teleconference. It's also being livestreamed on Nashua ETV. We are reading, the Nashua School District is holding an emergency meeting pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, Section 08, and Emergency Order Number 12, Section 3. Tonight, we welcome committee members Ray Garino, Gloria Timmons, I'm sorry, Sharon Gilio, and we actually have our alternate here, Gloria Timmons, as well as Paula Johnson. We also have with us Joanne Johnson, Chaz Miller, Tony Santorosa, Danine Robey, I apologize if I didn't get that quite right, Maria Diaz, and Mario Andrade, Tara Consilla, Dr. McKinney. So I would actually like to go ahead and take the role. Greggarino?
I am here.
Thank you. Sharon Gilio?
Here.
And Jessica Brown is here. We do have a quorum. All righty. So, let's see. All right. I guess this evening, the first item on our agenda is the 2021-22 Middle School Social Studies Pilot. So I think we have some folks here ready to present the program for us.
We do. Do you want me to share my screen? Or should we, or just, okay, all right. I got the head nod yes from Tara. I'm Joanne Johnson, and I'm your Humanities Coach for the Nashua School District. And today, we wanted to bring before you a proposal. So I will get that up on the screen right now. With me, I have all of the curriculum liaisons to help with this presentation, because they are awesome. And I figured it made sense to have the people that are with students all the time sharing. So each person is going to share a slide. So we'll talk about the proposal that we have. We're also going to talk about what we are doing currently, and what updates we'd like. And then we'll just talk about the benefits. Maria, you can go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Dominguez Diaz. I am an eighth and seventh grade teacher at FMS, Fairgrounds Middle School. And I am also the curriculum liaison for Social Studies at Fairgrounds. So for the past seven years, we have been using the resource from McGraw-Hill. And it's been great. But additionally to that, we have also, from 2010 to 2016, we started creating the Nashua Units by Design that we followed while we teach, in addition to the resource. So every single grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth, has their own Nashua Units by Design, which are the UBDs, and they have their own McGraw-Hill resource. And if you look on the slide, each McGraw-Hill resource is listed on there according to the title. As the years have gone by, minor updates and common assessments have been worked on within the Units by Design, which are the UBDs, since 2015, based on the changes in growth and diversity of our student population.
So our proposal, the Social Studies Department will team with the New Hampshire Learning Initiative to survey both the state standards, because they have the frameworks, even though they aren't officially out yet, they have them. We also have worked with them to do competencies at the elementary level. We'll then complete a scope and sequence and a curriculum review that will then further our work to develop competencies at the middle level for Social Studies, then vet, pilot, and recommend new resources. So the timeline for this proposal would actually start next month. There'll be three meetings per grade level on the Fridays. They won't be the whole day, but part of the Fridays where teachers are still doing professional development and working. We'll have this opportunity, we have this opportune time to get more teachers available to do this work. We will then have a department meeting in May, and then meetings would have, oh, I said meetings will happen on Fridays. They're about three hours. And then there'll be a summer summit to conclude and prepare for the pilots in the coming school year of 2001, 2002, starting in, obviously, the end of August in school. And then pilot August through April, and then final resource review and presentations would be in May.
My name's Tony Santorosa. I'm the seventh grade social studies teacher at Panchock and the curriculum liaison. So in terms of costs, so currently, to renew the 2014 subscriptions with McGraw-Hill for seventh and eighth grade only for one year, that's $34,776. For three years, it's just over $73,000. So the cost for the proposal, it's broken down at the bottom of the slide, but we are receiving a $14,000 credit, which is nice, which it brings the total down to just over $12,000, $12,060, broken down with the summer summit, the pilot and materials, and the staff cost.
Danine, would you like to share the benefits?
Oh, there we go. I'm not muted anymore. Sorry, everybody. Hi, I'm Danine Robey, and I am the curriculum liaison at Elm Street. I teach eighth grade US history. I really think that we see so many benefits to moving forward. I hope you guys do too. Teacher's first priority is that we're preparing our students for their future, right? We want them to be ready out there in the world. And as the pandemic has shown us, all of us, we want to be prepared. It's important that we offer resources that will educate our students in all situations. Also, it's important that we look closely at our resources, and that we want them to give that multiple perspectives in order to teach the skills necessary to become members of a diverse and socially just community. And we know, you know, by doing this, we really believe that we'll continue to be that Nashua that we all fell in love with and came to, the one that attracts families and top-quality teachers and retains them. So we hope you see that benefit, because we do. We thank you for considering it.
Thank you very much. That was a wonderful presentation. We appreciate that. I would like to open the floor for comments from the board members, questions? Yes, Ms. Timmons?
Thank you for the presentation. I just have one question. Discovering history, the past of the United States, and that's going to be very inclusive, right? That's also African-American past, because our classroom curriculum in history is really scarce. And I've got four, four grade kids going into middle school next year, four of them. I call them the fat four. They're going to hit all three schools. And I'd like them to learn all of United States history and not just white American history. Can you speak on that, please?
I can. I think that's why it's so important to us at this point to really have that opportunity to spend some time, first, creating the competencies that we need for our students at middle level, and then also then having that next move to vet the proper resources. And this gives all of the professionals that are history teachers that chance. And it also, if we have the opportunity to do this this way, I know in other departments, they had parents, board members, and people that could come in and really give an opinion and share their knowledge. So at this point, I just feel like this is, it's the best time to do this. So I really, I appreciate you saying that, because as a student from Nashua, I love the fact that we're going to have an opportunity to do this right.
Can I just add that the "Discovering Our Past" textbook, is that the title that you're reading, Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Yes, that is the current textbook that we're using in eighth grade. And so I think, though it does an okay job, I think that it is our opportunity to find something that could be better, to, you know, obviously, teach all the different, you know, like, the true history of the US, and just reach all the diversity that Nashua does have.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Johnson, you can go ahead.
Just a couple of questions here. Since you're talking about getting this up and running in a month, because that was said that you're going to want this starting next month if we approve it, did I hear that right?
That is correct. We would work on Fridays. We'd start with sixth grade, social studies teachers, and the New Hampshire, I knew I was going to say that's wrong, the New Hampshire Learning Initiative, company that we partnered with. And we would start by looking at what we know about competencies at the middle level, working on those first, then being able to go into curriculum review, looking at our UBDs, the current curriculum that we have, and how we can best update and create it to move further into what students need today.
Okay. I'm just taking some notes. So what do we, so what have they been doing, our students, right now at the middle school level, where we don't have this in place at this point in time with the history? Can somebody tell me? What have we been teaching them? Without this program?
I think, Ms. Johnson, I think this program is to pilot new source materials, either, and actually, that was going to be one of my questions, from the McGraw-Hill catalog, or are we looking at other publishers as well? Because that's actually, it was going to be my question, is what publishers are we looking at? And so I think on the second page of our packet here, it talks about the things we've been using from 2010 to 2016 for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this is because what we want to do started next month, start the program, the pilot program going. So what are we going to start, I guess, phasing out to phase this in? And is there going to be some type of disruption because of the fact that our students haven't been in the typical learning settings? We've been kind of piecemealing everything so far this year.
It's a great question. And this is a multi-step proposition or proposal, because it won't be a matter of just stopping what we're doing and starting something new. It's a matter of, first, we have to look at our competencies and how we're actually grading students. From there, you use, you go back to our actual UBDs, because McGraw-Hill is our resource, but we have curriculum. And our curriculum is the Units by Design, which are on the X2, or on Aspen website, on, and I'm sure you're all privy to having those. So we would go back to those, look at how those relate to competencies, what needs to be updated, changed, rewritten. From there, then you can look at, because now you have the foundation of what you need, because you have your curriculum, and you have the state standards. At that point, then you can look at publishers and what we would vet. But we can't get to that point until we do the foundation work first.
Okay. So when we're looking at publishers, so are each publisher going to come in with a different bid and cost factor that we're looking at? And what they're offering us for the cost?
Yes. They would come in with their own figures and costs, but that would, but most of the time, when you're piloting, the resources are free to pilot.
Right. Right. So I guess if we're going to pick somebody, if it's over $10,000, I would, I hate to say assume, because you know what happens when you assume, but I guess there would be a couple of bids out there. Anything over $10,000, it has to go out the bid, if I remember correctly. So Ms. Timmons asked a very good question, and discovering our past, the history. So in our history right now, where we're going to be incorporating more than just the white history, we're going to be incorporating history of the black community, are we going to be incorporating any other histories, like also other immigrants that came over to this country that we can integrate, so we get this full, big picture of everybody? Is that going to be part of the curriculum too?
Well, being a Nashua native, I would certainly hope that we could do something of that nature, since there, we are more diverse than two different communities. So that will be something that all of the professionals will definitely look at, for sure.
Because in everything I've looked at that's on the agenda tonight, it all talks about diversity. So I would hope that we would make sure that we have everybody included in the cultural plan here. So everybody, we get, I guess, a broad array of different cultures, and everybody's learning about the cultures within the community. So, but I thought Ms. Timmons' question was very good and very wonderful here. So, but there's a lot in history other than white, I guess. You know, we brought in a lot of other things back in history. And in history, do we do the history from 1619 or 1776? How do we start bringing it forward to show all the history in that? And all this, these books?
Well, we have different, so the different grades speak to that, and the frameworks for Social Studies are spanned from sixth through eighth grade. Both Danine and Maria's teach eighth grade, so if you want to hear a little bit more about that specifically from our country, either one of them can speak to that.
I'd love to hear it.
Danine?
We start, we start with a review of the Age of Exploration in eighth grade history, and we go right up through the Reconstruction after the Civil War. That is the eighth grade US history. However, they also, in sixth grade for middle school, and they have some also in elementary school, right? But in middle school, they also do ancient civilizations in sixth grade, and seventh grade, they do classical civilizations right up through, Tony Wood is the expert in that, but they go right up through the Age of Exploration, and that's where we pick it up, and we focus on our US history. And we add all of that multicultural parts in, but the resources, of course, you know, that we have, or, you know, we're looking for something that helps us with that. You know, we, we as teachers know it's important and, you know, want it in our curriculum, so we add it in, but looking for the resources to help us with that.
Perfect. Thank you very much for answering my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So actually, I'm going to let Ms. Gilio have the floor next.
Hi. I'm happy to be at my first meeting of the Curriculum Committee. I was not on it last year. I'm very excited. And I wanted to say that I'm so heartened by our movement toward the history of all Americans, and, and that we're moving towards civics more, which could not be more timely. But I also, and I'm concerned, I understand about the costs, you know, being of concern. But as a retired school librarian, I also want to remind everyone that working in tandem with your library, librarians in your individual schools, you can do a lot without expending extra money and find some really wonderful primary source materials. And so I'm very excited about this whole project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Garino, did you have a question?
I didn't really have a question, but I think this is, I think this is a good initiative, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to support it. And there is no white history, there is no black history, there's American history. And if you tell American history correctly, you include everybody. So you cannot tell American history without telling black history. It's part of it. It made us what we are today, and it has, it has implications for who we are today, as well as white history of the white people from Europe, which were my ancestors, which came over in the Industrial Revolution and the turn, and beginning of the 20th century. So it's all part of it. It's all part of the same mix. So I think we should be careful when we say white history, and, you know, it depends on the perspective. Traditionally, it's been the way history has been. It has actually left out people. So now we're, we're looking, we're reimagining history, and we're, we're looking at everybody's participation in it. So I think it's a great thing, and so I'm going to support this.
Thank you. So actually, I have a couple of questions. They're more specifically related to how we narrowed down to whatever it is that we are going to pilot. So how many, so we've got the Units by Design. How many new pieces of source material are you planning on bringing in? And I'd like to know what they are.
Well, currently, we have not chosen any new source materials, because in order to do that, we need that foundation I talked about with the competencies. And then also, we will use rubrics that will give us the opportunity to grade the resources, for lack of a better word. And then the people that pilot them will use the same rubrics. And then at the end, we'll have an opportunity to look at those one more time, the resources, and present, have them presented to us, and look at that again. And that, that's how the elementary English was done, when they looked at their different resources, and it was really just a fabulous method, because it gave us the opportunity to really have a chance to look at specifically what we needed for our students to best help them be successful. So that is the plan. Technically, from a standpoint of just the amount of teachers we have, we won't want to pilot more than three at the most, just because we don't have that many people teaching these resources. There's less, there's about 30 teachers at the middle level that teach history. So if you consider that you'd want more than one person in each grade doing a pilot to get a wide range of opinions, and having enough students to see the resource material, then you would have the opportunity to really make a educated decision about it. So we have not chosen how many at this point. We, it's just the beginning of this.
Thank you. Just to follow up to that specifically, do you think that one at each grade is sufficient? Do you need two or three, so you can get kind of a breadth of teaching styles?
We definitely need more than one at each grade. I think we have to really consider the fact we have three schools, and what that looks like, and what makes sense for the students in front of us now, and also what the, what the companies are willing to offer as far as how many different teachers would pilot the resources, and if there was a cost associated to that. It's obviously easier to have more teachers pilot something if it's free, so that will be another piece that will be important to consider.
And that was an excellent transition to my next line of questioning. So usually, generally, our pilot programs, we get free materials to begin with. Have we estimated, and you've got your cost comparison right now for your one-year renewal for the seventh and eighth grade versus a three-year? I'm guessing the three-year, there is some cost savings by extending out that far. Is there a, an estimate on what the new source materials and things are going to cost after the pilot program is over?
There is not. I have not priced out, because I haven't reached out to vendors, because I didn't think it was appropriate to do that until we knew what we were looking for. So the only resource that did, that teachers actually were excited about possibly trying, gave us a estimate, so we added that into the cost estimate, but we have not made the decision that that would even be a resource that we would pilot. I really want to be clear and authentic in this process, so we have not priced out resources yet.
Okay. I guess my advice during that is make sure we don't get something that's way up too high or, you know, way too low, maybe find some choices there in the middle if we can work that, because we don't want to find out that, obviously, that the very best cream of the crop is just completely out of our price range and waste anybody's time on that. But, so I guess, like, so my final question is actually regarding the timeline. Oh, actually, I have two questions. One, specifically about the course materials. Moving forward, do you know if this is going to be primarily access to digital copies or hard copies to the materials? Or is that going to come with your further evaluation of them?
In the past, we've had both. And just to be clear about the McGraw-Hill cost going forward, if we were to stick with what we have, that is for online resources only. We wouldn't be purchasing new paper resources, because the teachers have 30 copies of each book in their classroom. So just, because, and that wasn't clear, but we don't know at this point what the different publishers would offer us. Obviously, as history teachers, we like having the book in our hands, too, so we like the prospect of having both. Some companies are completely paperless, but we would obviously offer, I would, personally, as an English and social studies teacher, I'm always interested in having both. So that will be something that will be important for us to hear.
Thank you. And, all right. So the last one is about the pilot program itself and the timeline. So I see that you've got the, I think it's great to take advantage of the Fridays that we've got right now. And it looks like you've got a summer summit come in there, and you do have staff. Is that going to be required, or is that going to be a volunteer basis? And I'm assuming that's like paying the staff at their hourly rate?
So at this point, we put it in there as an option in case it turns that we needed more time for the teachers to be educated on what the resources were that they were going to pilot. And if that's the case, obviously, the teachers will be volunteering if they want to pilot new resources, and they would be paid at their hourly rate. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's the rest of my questions. Mr. Parker, did you have something you'd like to add?
I was on mute. I just wanted to say I'm very excited about this. Okay? Now, I understand you're talking to a former social studies and history teacher, so I'm biased anyway, so I just acknowledge that upfront. But they've worked very hard to get us to this point, and so I just wanted Joe to actually talk about where this new resource, when we make that decision to just give members of the board a sense of the vision of where we want our social studies students to know and be able to do, and how this change will get them there. Because I think that's, that's very important. Right? So if you could just say a couple of words on that, Danine, or Joe, whoever, you know, because we want to change this resource and get a new resource, what will we be able to do with our students that we can't do now?
Well, one of the things is that our, our curriculum varies quite differently in sixth through eighth grade, as far as the different resources that we have. And, you know, we look at the, high school has, what is it, the portrait of a graduate. And so here we are in the middle of bringing these young children up to help them through all of their different adolescent changes, and then move them into this high school position where they're able to then become citizens of our town and state and, and further on the world. And I know for myself, as a history teacher, I used to say to my students, when you go there, when you visit this place, and I want my students to be able to go into the future and, and know that they can go wherever they want and do whatever they want, because they have the background they have from Nashua, as a graduate from Nashua. And the other thing that I used to say to my students constantly was, it's not how it happened, it's how it's remembered. And I really want our students in Nashua to have that opportunity, to have that multicultural and civic background, so that they have that understanding. And I think if we can give that to them, and we can start that as young as possible, then we're going to be in a place that's better off than we've ever been. And again, grew up in Nashua, love Nashua, from Nashua, and, and that's important to us, and that's important to all of us in this meeting. So, and I'm so glad to hear that. It makes my heart so happy. So I think that's, at least where I believe this is important to go from here. Anthony, I hope I answered your question?
You did. You did answer my question, and I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, as we focus on multiculturalism and diversity, part of what I think Social Studies is best suited to do is to is to understand the complexities of that. Right? Diversity is hard. Multiculturalism is hard. Okay, it's not just about a chapter here on this group, a chapter there on that group, but the intersection of all of that, the good, bad and ugly. And so that I think we are well suited. We have the staff to do it. And um, if we get this resource, we'll be better equipped to do it and to think, to take our program even further. And I think what makes our program special is we don't hide from the nuances of some of the phrases that we use like diversity or multiculturalism. You know, we teach it, but we understand the nuances of it and how, you know, that's hard work. And I think the social studies and history program is best suited to, to um, help equip our students about the nuances of that, the complexity of those things of history. So.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I actually agree with you very much. I think having those building blocks and that good found, strong foundation is how you give people a baseline for them to grow their perspective. And I think that, um, thank you for sharing that with us. Let's see, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna be perfectly prepared to recommend this program here in a minute, but I think Ms. Johnson has one more question first.
Thank you. It's just a very quick question. Will we be able to see the textbook prior to um, the program um, starting? So the board can kind of get a preview. So if any parents ask, we have an idea exactly what this program is entailing.
So would you like, you would like to see the different um, pieces that are piloted? Or you want to see what teachers eventually and the, the committees pick to bring to you as a suggestion for approving?
Well, I think maybe if we could see a little bit of the piloting of the program. So this way we have a better idea because you know, when we hear about it, you can envision it because we don't have anything in front of us. And then after the piloting, you know, as it's, as we're moving forward and we're evolving and everything, maybe just to kind of give us an idea of what exactly everything is. You know, because we hear about what you're talking about, but you know, I'm not in a classroom, I'm not a teacher, I don't have any students in school anymore. All my kids are grown up. I just have babies now for grandkids. And like, you know, I took a lot of uh, parts in my kids' education. I was always in school. Um, they are advocating for them. So you know, it would be grateful at the board, you know, to be able to kind of get an idea to see exactly what's going on.
We would love that. We would love that. And we would be honored to have you. So we will make sure that happens.
Thank you. And I just would like to say something to Mr. Guarino here. You know, I want to agree with everything that you said tonight, and I thank you. You put it into a better frame of words than I did tonight. I think I'm, my brain is still on vacation. But I want to say thank you to you and thank you to you, Mr. Parker. I always appreciate everything you say. Um, I have a lot of respect for you. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Um, so uh, I would like to have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two middle school social studies pilot.
So move.
I will second.
All right, very good. I have a motion from Ms. Giglio and a second from Mr. Guarino. So uh, Mr. Guarino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Giglio?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes yes. And thank you to all of the presenters this evening. We really appreciate you taking the time to be here tonight.
Thank you so much for having us. We appreciate your time. And thank you to the teachers because you guys were um, on the front lines today. So we appreciate all of you. And we know that you need to go to bed because you have to do it again tomorrow. So thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that's exciting. So that will be recommended to the board um, next month at our meeting. So um, next up on our agenda, we have the Ramapo training. Is that how it's pronounced? And
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right. So um, I think we have a memo and um, a presentation on that. This, uh, Mr. Miller, are you in charge of this one, this part?
Sure. Yes, yes, that sounds great. Uh, yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate the time. This is the same type of process uh, that I brought the other grant with. It goes through a vetting process with the state, the Department of Education. They vet it through, approve it, and then it comes here through the district. Um, so it's, it's again from federal funds that are given to the state um, from uh, well, from the federal government, the E S S A, and, and they come and they, they give us these funds as a school of uh, comprehensive school improvement funds is, is what they are. Um, and what I tried to do, and, and hopefully you'll see with the, the trend with some of the grant funding that I have here, is that really to use high leverage um, uh, professional development to really change uh, you know, the, the, the culture and, and the people and, and what we do, the, the heart of what we're doing in teaching and learning. And it goes back to, you know, Mr. Parker said it great, that the, the heart of, of this and, and this work we're going to be doing with culturally responsive teaching and learning is, is really thinking about the nuances to what we're talking about and, and normalizing difficult conversations. And there are so many, so many things we avoid uh, when talking uh, about teaching and learning. And it, and a great, for instance, I'll, I'll give you a little background and then dive into the, the actual thing, but I, I think in education, we talk so much about the whole child. And we say, oh, yes, we're, we have taken consideration the whole child, the whole child, but we leave out so much about the whole child, especially when it comes from, comes in, in consideration with students of color and students of different backgrounds and different cultures. We leave out so much. And, and I think it's something where we have to normalize conversations that may give us a little bit of discomfort to talk about. And, and so this, this work is really going to be about setting up systems and structures within our school where we talk about all kinds of things that truly represent the whole child. Our school is wonderfully diverse and there's so much to give uh, and that I think we haven't even scratched the surface yet uh, at Ledge as, as to what our school can do and, and our students of opportunity and, and who we have there. And so um, I'm really excited about this work from Ramapo because it's going to take um, what, what we're doing with our social emotional learning work uh, that, that I'm, I'm very proud of the work our staff has done in that with setting up positive behavior intervention supports and social emotional learning strategies. Um, and it's really going to pair it through kind of a culturally responsive teaching and learning lens. Um, so there's that aspect of it. And then there's also the aspect of having us come together as a staff and helping us build a culture and a community as, as peers to again, normalize conversations that might have been previously difficult to do or to have, or that we just avoided. Um, and that involves building a culture of vulnerability. Only amazing things happen when educators feel safe and can be vulnerable within their school. And so this is going to help us. I think we've made some strides with that already in the past couple of years, but this is going to help formalize a lot of our structures in that, uh, in, I guess, in, in that type of professional development. So um, basically, there's, there's a couple of things we're going to do. And, and I apologize, I don't have a PowerPoint. So I, I look at Joanne and think, wow, she had a PowerPoint. I don't have a PowerPoint. Um, but uh, but there, there's, there's a couple of different uh, phases in, in this work. And one thing that I think is really important to note is this isn't a, a, a program we're going to put in place. It's not a, a quick fix. It's not a technical solution. It's more of uh, the beginning of, of a long road of work that, that we're going to do. That's not only going to transform, you know, kind of our school and our systems and structures, but, but transform the people inside. And, and when we start looking as educators at the lens from which we see the world, all of a sudden, everything changes in such a positive light. So the first part of this work is really going to be about building relationships. And that means coming together as a staff and thinking about this. What, what do the relationships we have among staff members look like and feel like? And what are the conversations we have? And um, what, how do we have those conversations? Thinking about things like mindful inquiry and, and using uh, terms like tell me more about that, or what I heard you say was rather than this or that. Or uh, things like uh, living in discomfort and being okay with living in discomfort in a conversation, right? Or um, living in non-closure. It's okay if we don't change the world today. It's okay if we don't fix this problem today. We're going to continue to work on it. So it's building these kind of building blocks, the foundations of um, what these conversations are going to kind of arise out of. So there's that first part of it. Um, and we'll, we'll infuse some culturally responsive teaching work and social emotional learning work within that. But there's going to be also a, a culture survey that's going to give us data back on what we're doing and how we're doing it. And so that's going to be really helpful, I think, to look at survey data like that. Um, and then we're going to take a look at uh, probably towards the end of the spring, towards the summer, we're going to look at uh, really changing the lens that we see our social emotional learning work and our culturally responsive teaching work and really focus it through an equity lens. And that's where I've, I, I've been very impressed with Ramapo because what um, what, what, what they, it's sometimes I think programs can be seen as let's, let's learn about them. Let's learn about those things or that culture or this tradition. It's, it, the, the work really isn't about that. And, and I was, I, I've been you know, privileged enough to do a lot of work with this back in Washington State where I was a principal. So I've been, I, I've been kind of in, in this work for about seven years or so. And, and if there's one thing I learned from it, it starts from within ourselves, that it starts from recognizing the lens that I, as a white male, see the world. And if I can identify that, then I can work to do so many great things with who I am. And so really changing our lens of not looking outward, but looking inward. And then we'll know, this is how I show up. I can only see the world as I see the world. And so if I know that, then I'm, I'm going to be a much better person moving forward and showing up for kids and, and, and peers and um, things of that nature within professional development. So there's going to be a big piece of shifting that lens. Uh, and that's going to be done again towards probably the, the probably May, June-ish time. And then over the summer, we're going to do some action planning to think about what the next phases of this um, this professional development and, and this work can look like. And so it's probably, I think it's October, October first, we get new funds every year from um, the comprehensive school improvement. So this will take us up to that point. So really, this time, the next few months in this contract is going to be all about laying the groundwork and, and starting and practicing these conversations that are going to really be the, 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 the gas to the, to the engine and, and launching our work. But what I love again about Ramapo is they don't rush it. They don't say, okay, we're going to talk about this, we'll fix it. Okay. That's not how conversations, difficult conversations around culture or race, they don't happen quickly. They happen when people get to understand themselves and move forward in a space that's safe and they can feel vulnerable. And they can fail forward and be okay because their peers will be okay with what they say. And so it, it's really going to, I think, be a, be a pretty great thing when it gets put together. And it, and from what I can see from Ramapo, they really have their act together and they're very smart and methodical uh, and intelligent about how they put it together. And they're also a part of um, demonstrated successes, kind of repertoire of, of people that, that, that they suggest as well. And demonstrate success is the group that kind of oversees the C S I schools. And so uh, they highly recommend Ramapo. Uh, I reached out to demonstrate success because I was at a loss. The, the group that I was going to use was a group that the district actually used Roots and Wings. Um, and they're unfortunately no longer around. Um, so demonstrate success suggested Ramapo. And they, they were just dead on with, with exactly uh, kind of what we need and how to support us. So just kind of tossed out a ton of information there. But uh, I, I guess, questions, concerns, uh, feedback?
Thank you so much. Um, as always, your enthusiasm and knowledge of subject matter is always on point. Uh, so Mr. Guarino, I'll let you have the floor first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just had a, a quick question. I, I see the phrase community mapping used a couple of times. Um, I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure what it is. But I, I, I think this is a good, uh, I, I do think this is a good project. And um, it's professional development in a good area that we, I think we need to keep up with the changes in the demographics, the changes in the student body. And uh, but I, I just wanted to, I was trying to figure out how they, what context they, they're talking about when they say community mapping.
Yeah, I'm, I, thank you, Mr. Guarino. Good, good question. I'm actually still learning a little bit about their language uh, and, and trying to get involved in their common language uh, of what they're talking about. It's my understanding that that's in, in line of um, getting a better understanding and, and kind of mapping out the, the um, uh, how, how deep our community goes and, and what are the different parts of our community? And because I, I think if we go deep into our community and don't just take it surface level, or take it from the lens of this is just the way I see our community. If we can dive deep and map that out, then it's there and it's in front of us. And we can plan with that. Um, you know, knowing who is in our community, knowing where our community holds their transit, or holds their traditions and celebrations and the churches they're a part of. And, and that, that's the way I'm thinking of it. I'm still uh, learning. We've only had one meeting with them so far, kind of a pre-meeting. I'm waiting until you know, things kind of move forward with the, the contract itself. But that, that's my initial understanding of it.
Okay, I, I, thanks. It makes sense. Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and I actually think that kind of speaks to um, what really struck out to me that you're talking about. It's not an all at once, quick fix. I think all of us know essentially what we want our goal to be is a you know, culturally sensitive and diverse and strong community where we're all invested. But speaking of lenses, I view things a lot of times through the idea of endurance sports. And um, you know, if you're going to run a marathon, you don't go out in your front door and run twenty miles. Every single mile you run leads up to your end game of finishing your marathon. So whether it's one step, one mile, or ten miles, that's all movement in the right direction. So I think that um, I, I think recognizing that this is not a, hey, we're going to go get this training and instantly everything's going to be perfect is really good recognition. So thank you for that. Um, so Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. I think Ledge Street is one of the most diverse schools out there. My children went to Ledge Street when they were young. Um, very diverse population there. Um, and it's, it's, it's also a transient school. Kids move around a lot, if I remember correctly, um, because it's in one of the deepest of the inner city neighborhoods. Now, when would we you, we don't, you're applying for the grant, right? We haven't gotten the grant yet at this point, or did we?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's been approved from the state.
Okay, it has, that's what I thought. It's, it's been approved from the state. And um, now, you were saying something about the students are going to take the survey? Is that, you're gonna?
Um, we, we're, it's, it's, that's a really good question. We're actually talking about some merging some of the things we're already doing because I, I, I've done a little bit of this work again back when I was a principal back in Washington State. There's some things that I brought from, from my time there to here which we're going to incorporate. So there is this, there's a staff survey and then I've, that, or a climate survey that they're going to help with, with the staff. I've already talked with them that every year, I unfortunately, because of COVID, it, it threw this off. But for the past two years, I give uh, my fourth and fifth grade students uh, a survey at the beginning of every year. And it's a survey that dives into questions on a sense of belonging. Uh, you know, how do they feel? Do they feel a sense of belonging within their school? Because research shows if kids can feel a sense of belonging within their school, that there's a direct correlation with them being invested and engaged academically. But also a sense of grit, a sense of perseverance through things. And so I give them this, it's, it's a ten question survey, five with a sense of belonging, five with a, a sense of grit and perseverance. And that gives me and the teachers uh, in the school a really good idea of how the fourth and fifth graders are, are really feeling and seeing themselves within the school. And I found that I can generalize that to other grades. And so um, it's, it's been something, it's, it's been great. It's usually, it usually comes out pretty positive. Uh, kids uh, like going to Ledge. I'm, I'm a little biased as principal. I probably think I'd say that. But, but I, I think the survey results show that, that they do like being at Ledge and they feel comfortable and they feel safe overall. But then we'll look at the data sometimes and think, wow, I, I wouldn't have thought this, or I wouldn't have thought that. So we do have components like that, that we're going to merge with the Ramapo work. And they're going to help me refine that a little bit and merge it with the whole culturally responsive teaching PD that we're doing.
Okay, so my other question is, when you give students these surveys, do you have to get parental consent in order to give the surveys out to the students? do you have to get parental consent in order to give the surveys out to the students?
No, it's just something where I go into the classroom and I just, I give them and they answer, they answer anonymously. They don't put their, their names on the survey and it's very informal. I just go in, I ask them the five questions. I tell them and, and I, I like to think that I have a rapport with the students where they'll trust that, that this is going to be data that's going to be used for a good thing, you know, and, and I actually come back and present the data to them with a nice little chart and everything. So, so they know. But I basically say the five questions, they mark on their sheet and then I say the next five with grit and they'll mark on their sheet and then that's it.
And that data we kind of use to see which way we're going with the kids and how to improve things and kind of get their kind of feelings on, you know, what they, where they are in school, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
You know, it sounds like a really, you know, because I remember back when with my, my kids in there, there was times with a principal that wasn't very good and you know, was, it was, yeah, kids, you could see how some kids didn't feel comfortable in the schools because of some of the things that went on. But you know, it's nice to have improvements and see kids being welcomed into school, you know, because sometimes school is the safe haven for our students. And I'll tell you again, I'm so thrilled that our students are back in school again with the buses today that I'm hoping that we're having a long relationship, that they can see their principals and their teachers and they, and they can see their students again because it'll be the highlight of some of these kids' days. Thank you very much. And thank you for allowing me to be in the meeting tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, yes, Ms. Gilio, did you have a comment?
Um, yes, I had a couple of things. Um, first of all, um, Ledge Street School is the one school in the district that I've had the most experience with and spent the most time at. I was their substitute librarian for half a school year and then I continued to volunteer there for the next two years. So it holds a very special place in my heart. And I was really happy to see this proposal coming up tonight because just the other night we, um, we approved the B E R C initiative that Mr. Miller brought to us. And I think both of these together are going to do amazing things for the staff and the students at Ledge Street. My experience there is that they have such an incredibly dedicated staff. And yes, they're amazingly diverse, but it's a richness that, that only begs to be built upon. So, um, I, I see this whole thing, the whole Ramapo process as an evolution that, um, we would love to hear as things go forward, get updates when how things are going. I think that that would be an appropriate thing for us since we don't just say, okay, yeah, we love this idea and then we don't hear anything more about it. But I want to thank Mr. Miller again. Um, and I like in particular in the, in the literature that he gave me, um, gave all of us the definition of equity be treating each individual based on their needs. And that really, that really jumped out at me. So thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, um, if you guys are ready, I would like a motion to, uh, recommend to oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Ms. Ms. Tim, go ahead.
To echo, um, a sentiment that, um, Mr. Miller said about, he think that his school is one of the best. He's a little biased. But my kids also think that too. And I just wanted to let you know that they love Ledge Street. And the ones that love Ledge Street, love Ledge Street. They're in another school, but they love that school now, but they had to make themselves into the new school because they didn't want to leave Ledge Street. So you guys are doing a great job over there in this Ramapo. It's, it's fantastic to change, to change our lenses. That mean the staff lenses, lenses that would change all lenses is phenomenal. Thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
That's great. And I agree. I, you, you will never hear. You always hear great things about, from the students that go attend Ledge Street about how awesome their teachers are, their principal is. It is, there's community buzz about you, sir. So. So I, so I would like to go ahead and look for a motion to, uh, approve the proposed Rapapo, Ramapo contract for services with Ledge Street Elementary School for the amount of $35,000 funded by the CSI grant.
So moved.
All right.
I will second.
All right, Ms. Gilio, and then seconded by Mr. Guarino. Mr. Guarino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes. I was muted, but I'm not.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. And motion passes unanimously. That will be, um, sent to the board next month. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. We appreciate you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate the feedback as always. And yes, I would love to be able to come back and talk more about the progress we're making. As again, I, I think this is cutting edge, not only for Nashua and putting us out there, but I think it's also cutting edge for the state. So thank you all very much for your support. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
My dog's going kind of crazy. So, um, if you guys, Mr. Andrade, would you like to, um, do you have any comments for the committee this evening?
No, I want to thank the committee for their support in, in voting in favor of these two initiatives. I think it's going to, uh, again, move Nashua forward. I also want to thank Principal Miller for his comments tonight and his presentation and his passion for, for Ledge Street as well as the middle school curriculum liaisons. I think they did a remarkable job presenting what they thought the problem was and, and reasonable solutions. So um, I want to thank them for, again, reflecting the incredible professionalism throughout Nashua school districts. Um, and again, thank you as a subcommittee for approving these two initiatives. I think it's going to propel the, the district forward and address and diversity and equity issues across both the elementary schools and, and middle schools.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you. We're, um, it's been a good night approving good, awesome things for the city. So I'm, I'm happy about that. So, um, shockingly, it's, we're under an hour. So let's do this. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Moved by Ms. Gilio, seconded by Mr. Guarino. Mr. Guarino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Yes. And Ms. Brown votes yes. So we are adjourned at 6:57.